Beautiful.
I used to just go to cousin about like.
Yeah, a lot of people do that.
I love it down there. I've been there. I've been going there every year since nineteen eighty.
Nice because you just go down the sink and you just drift along.
Yeah. People, you know, some people are terrified of the riverbed. I've had some.
Oh, no, that's a nice.
That's absolutely correct. Well, you get down sixty-eight feet, you know, there's a three knot current and you don't even have.
Well, just you kind of have to give up your control.
Yeah, you have to, you have to know what you're gonna do.
Yeah.
The only time I got with him bothered was at the great barrier when he come to the cliff. And all I could hear in my head was. That ruined the whole thing. It was seriously, all I kept waiting, something way up there.
Is it like nothingness?
Nothing.
It's, it's just like an abyss.
Now, that would, that would be terrifying for me. Like that's, that would be like, no thank you.
Kind of like Puerto Rico.
No, you just turn around and there's a cliff.
Yeah, but you can't see what's chasing you when you turn around, right?
Yeah, well, that's like the shell off cousin out there.
Like, I don't like to be where I like can't see my feet. I don't like where there's dark, you know, like where you're swimming.
I don't do cave diving. I don't like cave diving.
I've done some of that too.
I don't like.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Not, not unless I can see the other side. That's the only.
Yeah.
You aren't gonna get me anywhere where I can't see the other side.
Yeah, that's where my, that's where my fears get away with me.
You know, it's really dark when you can't see your hands until you touch your face.
Yes. Do night dives? That's, that's true.
Do you night dive?
I have.
Yeah.
Night dive.
Is that scary?
No. No, it's very cool.
You see a whole different set of critters.
We do see a whole different set of critters.
Are there things that light up?
No, not, well, not deep enough for them to light up.
Okay, I didn't know.
I don't go deep enough to.
No, there's, there's bio luminescence too, where you just.
That's what I wondered.
You have the water and it lights up.
Oh, that's what I wondered. So, we went to Hawaii. They, they did, uh, we did a, um, what is it called? The big, um.
Summary?
No, it was, it's a, it's a big, um.
Last part of both.
I can't think of it. I was so sick on the way out there, I didn't hear when we got there. Uh, so, we went out and they put a, a, like a boogie board that had lights all the way around it. And then the, um, God, I can't, I think, what are they called? Um, they have mounds on the bottom of there.
Stingrays?
Stingrays.
Oh, oh, yeah.
They, they barrel roll and they eat the krill. There were some bio luminescence in that. And they, when they would barrel roll, you would kind of see krill and different things down there, but. I saw one eaten and I went back and bowled, so it's not basic, so.
What's really cool is when you're on a sailboat at night and you look at the bow and you sail along and that curl in the bow is.
Oh, that's. That's.
It's unbelievable. And you can just about read by the sun, by the, yeah, by the sun, by the stars. But it's so bright out there, you know, it's total blackness. It's unbelievable.
That would be cool.
Just unbelievable. See, now you gotta think.
Boats, boats and iron out friends.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
We gotta start.
We do have to start, but where is everybody?
Steve's in his office.
I know, that's why he's watching you. He usually. Well, I'm gonna officially call, like, I'm gonna, um, okay, I'm gonna officially call. Whoop, man, did I get theirs? Did I turn mine on? Okay. Be there? Everything's okay?
Everybody's here.
All right, we're gonna call it over and it is what? Five thirty?
Three.
All right, do a little call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Chandler here. Mr. Bensy?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Mr. Kewins-Cliss?
Here.
There we go.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Coming.
Can you yell it loud enough so we can hear?
And Mr. Alereen's accent.
All right, so we have a forum, so. Okay, so we have a forum, so we're good. So we have approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Mr. Bensy?
Yes.
Mr. Kewins-Cliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
And Mr. Wisswasser and Mr. Alereen's back there.
All right, item three, those who don't have, we'll follow it. Uh, work session, items of introduction discussion. I think we have the update for the twenty-three budget recommendations, no attachment. I don't have your name, but I'm assuming you're going to go ahead and do it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, attached to your agenda was a list of items that had been updated. Um, I will add to this on page thirty-six, I did forget one item. Um, this is an item that I previously requested, uh, conversation on and it's the capital projects. I have included the balance of what was left from this year that was spent on an environmental study for a piece of property we were looking at purchasing. And I've included that amount on page thirty-six for phase one of the nature trail and that will move to the discussion by you. Um, in addition, um, I'm gonna go over them very quickly. Um, the date of activity has now been updated through October thirteenth. I added a B O T column, um, which is where all the numbers reside. Um, the recommended, um, are the same as they were before. And the changes to the B O T are the ones here in front of you. On page sixteen, uh, I have moved all of the items from B P W, um, building improvements and land improvements to building and grounds. We can have more discussion and that's why, uh, Ben is here tonight with us. He can answer any of those questions. Um, a question was asked about park facility signage. I've added ten thousand dollars to parks and recreation for land improvements for that item. Page twenty-five cemetery, um, I needed to add three thousand dollars for bin boxes for a concrete path, um, that were not able to be added this year. Because they're not available. Uh, the farmer's market expenditures has been added and that's the first page we're gonna move to tonight. Um, and then page thirty-one, building and zoning, um, I have increased, uh, based on, um, the recommendation of a few, um, board members. Uh, a step four increase based on the duet twenty-twenty-two wage scale, um, for the planner. Um, last time we left off on page twenty-eight, so if we move to page twenty-nine, that is the farmer's market. Um, including the expenses and the, um, operating transfers in, thank you. Uh, we have, uh, ten thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, um, in revenues as well as appropriations. Standard, basically standard operating for them this year, the, obviously the wages coming out of the, um, parks and recreation. Um, coordinator salary, um, so there's no salary warranted here. Um, the largest expense it looks like is their fundraising expense. Um, they are hoping to, after a hiatus, to be able to have a fundraiser this next year in twenty-twenty-three. Um, so those expenses are included there. And then the rest of the expenses are pretty standard, um, expenses to that budget over the past several years. Any questions on the farmer's market?
My question I have, please, with your community promotion, the two thousand dollars, what does that entail?
So, in the past, there have been, um, ads that have been placed in the newspaper or, um, previously when we had events like bath days. We would buy a, an ad in a program to promote the farmer's market, so that still is what community promotion is. Anytime there's, um, uh, a purchase of something like that in a newspaper or program to promote the market.
Because they only use fifty dollars up to this point.
Twenty-nine.
So, we only use fifty dollars as of October, the thirteenth of October, of the two thousand. But we're still gonna put, so to do your carryover, the additional funds for community promotion.
No, there's no carryover.
So, what happens to the funds that are.
Any funds that are left unused will return to the farmer's market. No, this is a fund. So, it returns to the farmer's market fund balance.
Okay. So, we don't, let's see. Cause we don't have a fund balance listed. Cause we don't have one at this time.
The fund balances are listed in the audit.
But it's not here?
No. To my knowledge, as of the end of the last year, they had approximately, I would, I think, I didn't bring my audit with me, but. Uh, Treasurer Wisswasser has his, maybe they have approximately sixteen thousand dollars. Not to put you on the spot, Mr. Wisswasser.
I was looking to see if there was any comforts report.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I can go behind.
No, my question, say, what's there? Is there anything in the fund balance?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, cause I go through numbers, see, that's why. I just want you to have the memorize.
What thing? This part? I can't see what's on the other.
Twenty thousand three hundred fifty-three.
He just does one search. Okay, so there's, so there's twenty thousand.
Oh, thank you.
Three hundred fifty-three.
Three hundred fifty-three. Then, why do we need to put two thousand in, you know, if we already have? And that's not, that's not including.
Just because they have a fund balance, you have to budget for their expenditures.
Right. Yeah, okay.
They can't just, you have to, yes.
For everything.
For everything.
Yeah. No, I understand that. So, does that include the dollars left over? Well, it won't because we don't know what they'll do between now and the end of the year.
Correct, but they most likely will add to their fund balance.
Well, that's what I'm seeing. So, what's the purpose of the fund balance if you can't use it to support the budget?
You can.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking why we're, why we have a two thousand dollar expenditure when we already have twenty thousand.
But it's all the expenditures, it's not just that one expenditure.
We're looking, what we're looking at is farmer's market.
No, I know. All of the expenditures in the farmer's market will come out of the fiscal year twenty-three budget. The fund balance is from previous fiscal years.
Correct. And I'll still ask the question, if we have twenty thousand in it, why do we need an expenditure of two thousand?
Why are you picking that one expenditure out?
Their, their total budget's ten thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars.
Right. I understand that. But all I'm saying is our community promotion is a two thousand dollar expense.
Okay.
Why are we using that two thousand dollars when we have twenty thousand in the fund balance? I don't.
You're not, if you're, you're writing the budget and it has to be written as a budget for the expense to be in there. If you, if you want to take, uh, say you don't want to pay that and you choose to take an expenditure out of fund balance, that would be a budget amendment, which will be done partway through the year.
But it has a funding balance.
That's correct. You typically don't vote for budget amendments because that is what the budget process is. So, that's to take care of them situations. And you, but you amend the budget out of fund balance, but you don't budget the budget out of fund balance as a rule. Uh, you can budget here, you can budget here for more money if you want to. For instance, we felt maybe we was gonna spend, I believe it was seven hundred thousand or something like that out of fund balance for the police and fire departments, public safety department. But if, when we got right down to it here, what you're gonna find is it's gonna be, that number's gonna be a lot over. Because of, of revenues that's increased to the year, tax, taxable values and things and such like that. Really, you should, you should print off, uh, uh, for this meeting, we ought to print off a copy of, of. But it's not really to that point yet. It's not my, my, to look at, but we should probably print off a fund balance report. Not everybody likes to look through the audit and it's, it's a little bit cumbersome to do that, we gotta write papers. It's a little easier when you got a laptop on your desk or something like that.
Yeah, it really is.
It's kind of like setting up my desk with a computer. But that's what you do that for. You're doing, you're putting a number out there to budget for.
And you said, you cannot budget with a fund balance.
No, I didn't say you can. I said you don't.
Don't, right, but you, but you can.
If you have a shortfall in, in your, your budget, that you can't take and afford to take and make everything you need and make everything work. When you have a particular line item or bump such as police, public safety, police and fire, you would maybe take and budget some money out of you. Well, just bump, bump balance to take care of it through the year, just to, so you're being honest and the auditors will look at that. But if you legally, you have the budget for the expense, you can't just take and put a number in there and then not have the money to do it. That's, that's the difference right there. Where this situation here, you have the money to do it. You budgeting for this expense. I don't know what the farmer's markets plans for their budget is. I mean, it might, I'm not speaking for them, but they may have something else in mind. I don't know, maybe you're wrong. And then they got canceled.
The last couple of years, it's been.
Well, that's a couple of years, so it's pretty hard to take a shot that are here to predict this.
The same would be true, if you wanted to, for the, um, the senior center. They have a fund balance of, of thirty-seven thousand dollars if, if. If you wanted to look at them as well, but I don't budget that money for.
No, I just, I spent. Well, I knew they had a fund balance because I, but could I put my finger on it? No.
I, I spent, I spent this morning, the first part of my day, I did lunch and stuff with the public safety department, the police department in particular. Well, and ran fund balances for the four funds that they were got. You think about they have four funds, the general fund, they have police training fund, the, the D G D, or the, the.
Not the.
I guess they just can use the drawing, drawing forfeiture. It's kind of like, it's got a D.
Yes, it's got a D.
And then they also have an order for all the recovery fund, where they get money out of this, all the inspection stuff and whatnot. They include that, which is pretty lucrative funds as well.
It's a very.
For what they put in, they put time in it to do it, they assign an officer to do that. However, it's very limited on what they can spend the money on that they get out of this, like, or, they have to be very careful what they do. Cause they have to fill all those things with one audit on that too.
There's one question.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to the D D A, um, nothing has been budgeted at this time, uh, for them. Um, if the Cousins Park Improvement Project were to move forward, I would return back and, um, request funds for that project. Um, at this time, they've not submitted any invoices for their architecture or their engineering, um, which we authorized twenty thousand dollars for them to move forward with. So, um, I imagine that that will need to be adjusted. Building and zoning. I did increase revenue in this area based on, um, year-to-date activity. Um, and then moving forward, um, in the department, they're pretty much, the, um, expenses are as they have been in previous years. Although, no, I did recommend a bump for the, um, salary of the planner based on, um, Duett's wage scale and salary survey. Um, so I did that here and then you'll see that in the top line of the expenditures.
When you talk about the survey, did you ever, did you want to give you a small copy of that?
I sent those out to you that day.
Oh, great, oh.
Via email.
Okay. Okay. Oh, wait, anyway, it was kind of an interesting piece, um, especially Delhi. And what I did have, I had a question with that, with your salary survey, it was how many parcels do you know that Duett has? The residential, not the whole longer list, just.
Nope, I don't know.
Okay, so there's no way of knowing?
Look it up in the state. There's an account equalization report listed in there.
It's listed.
That's available online or you can, you can get it.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you know the number?
No, that's not what I was asking. Or you're using the survey with Duett and with Delhi. And those were the two, obviously Delhi's ways of, are they? And Duett has a few more than what we have, but you're still using it as comparison and that I found kind of interesting.
If this board has other recommendations for other townships to use, I'd be happy to look those up.
I don't know. All right, but it's a good.
I mean, our planner could easily be hired by Delhi Township.
They're very happy with their.
That's not my point. I think you know that.
I think you could go anywhere. Yeah, because this is like a five thousand dollar increase.
Uh, I believe we've had four or five planners during, um, this, this time, yeah, so I'm pretty happy with this one and would like this one to stay. So, being competitive is important.
Well, it is. And it's the first one that I've known since I've been following anyway, that he's a planner, not planning director. But that's titles and, you know.
Well, it would require, I mean, he has interns working under him, but he essentially is the planning director.
That's what I.
Moving on to drug forfeiture, um, these are cases as Mr. Wisswasser, Treasurer Wisswasser indicated, um, that are budgeted by the chief of police. And, um, our other funds that they use drug forfeiture, um, here, um, Chief Lindemolder has budgeted for, um, a thousand dollars of revenue. And, um, this department has a fund balance as well, but he's, um, budgeting for an expenditure of approximately three thousand dollars. Police training, approximating a grant of twenty-one hundred dollars and expending a grant of twenty-one hundred dollars on each thirty-three. Uh, the library fund, um, this amount is calculated by the assessor, um, for this budget. And because of having rollback, we're anticipating, uh, three hundred and eight thousand dollars this year approximately. Um, they also pay us a percentage to collect, um, these taxes. Um, and the resulting amount is the three hundred and eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Why would the rollback result in less money?
Because over here, well, the.
But it's an offset to the growth.
It's set up for an offset purpose. And actually, theirs is actually gonna get away, if you just renewed it, because they renewed it at, um, ten years. And their rollback is gonna eat them alive in the last five years of that thing.
Yeah.
And so, they're gonna, they're probably gonna come back and ask for something really adjusted, um, at that point in time. Nobody, I don't think anybody really, we talked to them about that. We went down there, we actually met with them, we talked to them, but they didn't really.
Didn't understand?
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna say that. I don't know. What's the case is they chose to go with ten years versus doing a three-year, which is the ideal one, put the, that's the rollback. Because you, you're usually by the end of the third year, you're ready to take and renegotiate that. The township should do that with their general, but not working out. But if they want to, the township could change that. Because we're not getting, uh, five dollars a month. We're getting three. That's, that's how that works.
Yeah. What year? They passed their new one last year?
They're, they're actually still in the final year of this year's, the, the old one will be this year's tax collection. Taxes are black behind the rear, obviously. But the, the, uh, the new millage that they passed, this last thing they passed, it was done a year ahead, so it'll start in, through this next year. That's why it's about to got a fair, that's a head to roll back for two thousand twenty-three.
Oh, I thought, I thought it was twenty-two.
No, it does not. It starts, it does start in twenty-three. That's, that's why the federal taxes are black behind the rear.
So, that means the ten years starts at twenty-three or that's.
Starts in, it'll start in twenty-three and go to thirty-three.
Yeah, okay.
So, how is our taxes going up with the rollback? But the libraries goes down with the rollback?
A little more taxable value, a little more taken. Just the calculation of the dollars.
Like I said, I don't follow that. But it should be proportional.
Yes. And we do ours.
So, wouldn't they trend in the same direction?
We grew ours every year as well, if you think about it.
Yeah.
This board grew over here forty twenty-nine, y'all, forty twenty-nine every year.
Yeah, but we still have the rollback.
Yeah.
So, wouldn't they trend in the same direction?
Not necessarily. There's, there's a bigger difference in the revenue. That'd be an assessor question.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see the math on that.
I can.
Cause the rollback should be proportional regardless of the source. So, if it's up, it's up. If it's down, it's down.
For proportionate in the percentage, but not proportionate in the dollar amount.
Right, I'm not saying the dollar amount, but ours goes up and the library's goes down, they should trend together.
I don't believe ours will go up every year. Ours goes down sometimes.
I mean, the rate goes down, but then amount goes up.
Because of the increase in values, because you have more and more parcels.
Right, but that should hit the library the same way.
Not necessarily, because I don't think the library is, uh, it's not gonna affect it as much when you get some, some of these things that are exempt from the library. Well, that may not, may not see library tax, uh, for instance, and I didn't look at the actual, see exactly where it was just spread over all of that. Or whether it's not spread over all of that. You gotta remember, you got four different school districts. You got four different, uh, three different ISDs.
Yeah.
Um, L C C, I guess is everywhere, um, pretty much so. And, and other than L C C, or the. So, it's, that's part of it. That's a good question for Beth.
Yeah, cause if you look historical, it goes in the same direction. When the township goes up, so does the library.
I'll straighten up if you will, if you will, then, um, if you'd like the assessor, you can have a conversation with the assessor.
Yeah, cause last year we did the same thing. And there's ten thousand more than we budgeted for last year. So, I was wrong last year, is what I'm saying, in a nice way.
I hear you.
Okay.
Page thirty-five includes auto theft prevention fund. Again, this is another, um, of the, um, focus funds. Page thirty-six, capital projects. This is what I indicated to you was an additional change on page, um, on that page was to budget the balance, which is forty-two thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, but based on, um, this board, we had a conversation about the continuance of that. And then getting into page thirty-seven, we are into the sewer fund. This is based on a one dollar increase, sewer charges for services. That will come to you, um, once this budget has been approved for your approval of that rate.
We don't really know what that number is yet.
One fourteen fourteen?
One fourteen.
We're at one thirteen, one thirteen, I believe, right now.
Okay.
And that's continuing to follow the rate study completed by Onbok, which is now favorable.
It was one thirteen last year.
Yeah. Uh, moving to page thirty-eight, um, these last two pages are basically sewer and then street lighting. Um, administration of the sewer fund operations, treatment plant, um, this year, our treatment costs, according to SCUMA. And the budget that was presented to you here, um, one point one five six million dollars. Capital outlay of eighty-five thousand dollars. And then finally, um, debt service. We have two payments a year that we pay, um, approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. We have two payments a year that we pay approximately $800,000. Any questions on the sewer fund? Page 40. Revenues and appropriations for a transfer to the general fund, approximately $600, or $6,000. And an expenditure of approximately $600 for miscellaneous. And last but not least is street lighting. The township collects an assessment on each of the streetlights and then makes a payment for that. This is one that we always watch and have to adjust by the end of the year, based on rates. Based on that, I did invite Ben here tonight, in case you had any questions about any of your recreation projects, any of the building and grounds projects, any projects from DPW. And he also assists the work for the cemetery. He can answer questions on any of those items. There's going to be some questions last time on some of those departments. So I asked him to be here for information purposes for you, should we have any additional questions? And some page 16? 16 and 17 are, I believe, building and grounds and DPW. I'm sorry, 16 and 18? Building and grounds starts on page 16, you're correct. Supervisor, come.
We talked about pole barn. We talked about the. Resurfacing, but I'm not seeing that.
Any jokes, specific questions about the pole barn?
No, see, we not, I know that we talked about the pole barn. I'm going back through this. Geez, I need to tell you I didn't mark you. Everybody else gets marked, but you didn't get marked, so I'm kind of scanning. I know you had projects that.
I know we talked about.
Yeah, we talked about for gravel and all that good stuff.
Yep, so in building repair, we have the pole barn roof, the pole barn siding, pole barn overhead door repair, and other building repairs is in addition to the pole barn. In addition to that, down in building improvements. We have scheduled for pole barn lean-to, which I think we did discuss.
Yeah, we did.
Last time. Yep, the barn pallet wrecking, barn storage shelves, and barn overhead trolley with chain falls.
Those were all included in what you have listed?
They were just spread across two, yeah, two different. They were in DPW and they were in building and grounds, and now they've been condensed into building and grounds.
The way the budget was laid out between, between Public Works and, and Building and Grounds was a little. I guess it was kind of repetitive, and they had the same budget line items for building repair and building improvements. So we decided to clean that up and put everything for building repairs and building improvements into building and grounds rather than Department of Public Works.
They're still included in the budget, so the dollar amount is already.
The dollar amounts haven't changed.
They're just doing.
They just went through different line.
Yep. Does it look like it didn't? I mean, it wasn't.
This isn't about DPW, but did we get the insurance, health insurance rates, Beth?
I am not.
So remind me what you budgeted for?
10%.
10.
Did you see 10%?
Uh-huh. In past years, it's gone down, fortunately. I don't know that we'll continue to see that trend, but we're still waiting for those numbers.
Ours went up 10% this year, so I bet it will be around there somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any additional questions?
Go on, go on.
I think Jason was the one who had a lot of questions about DPW, and unfortunately, he's not here to ask them.
Any additional questions?
Did you produce a new cover sheet like this for us?
I did not, yet.
Okay.
I figured out the conclusion of this, meaning we would be in a better place to do that.
Yeah. It helps me wrap my head around the amount of fund balance we're projected to use. Are we using fund balance from individual funds in each case where money needs to be transferred in? Or are we transferring in from general fund?
We're transferring in from general fund. The only one that that is not true for is the public safety fund. I am projected to use their $275,000 that they have in their public safety fund to offset the money that needs to be transferred in.
Is there a strategy around that, or some other reason we wouldn't dip into the individual funds accounts rather than the general fund fund balance?
There is not a strategy. I have not had individual conversations with those that have funds to see what their future plans are. But I could certainly do that, but no, I did not budget to use those funds. I know the senior center has been waiting to do the analysis of the expansion. And I probably would at that time use that money for, towards that project. But in other areas, I don't have a strategy.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to me that we would use it where we can. The senior center's sort of been special because they've been doing some targeted fundraising for specific projects. But I don't know that the rest of the funds, now that the farmer's market has sort of been brought in-house rather than standing on its own, it doesn't make sense to take general fund fund balance when they have a fund balance.
Actually, that's not anybody's decision, but at the end of the year, the financial statements are as far as, but legally, you can take the fund balance, no problem. She's not entirely correct in her statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, that's, that happens. You're both right, but you're not entirely right. It depends, it depends on, it goes by statute, what the statute says for each one of these funds, whether it's a not major governmental fund or whether it's a not. And that's how that plays itself out. Now, obviously, it's a management decision, management being this board, to decide if they want to spend money on a fund balance on any fund, including the senior center or any other fund, that they chose, that they choose. If it is, if it is within the financial statements of the township, that you can both take and spend the money from these funds. And you only can go to the state to spend money in these funds. But by, by statute, there's a few of these things that they have to take into account. Otherwise, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, nothing would work. I mean, but you think about it. Some of your insurance and some of the stuff, your retirement, and some of this other stuff, it has to take, it'd be done on some of this stuff, but not all. The cemetery fund has to be moved on, is the rule, because it's not one to deal with under interfaces. But there is, the farmer's market did stand alone on its own for a long time. They were going to be putting money into it. But it is, it is standing alone on its own, for the most part, it could be used that way, the same as the senior center and the land laws. But at the audit, there's, and when they, when they write the financial review for that goes to the audit at the end of the year, that's where we reap the value of their knowledge to keep us out of the problem of not doing that.
Right.
To say that we just don't do that, that's not a fair.
I'm saying I don't have a strategy.
You don't, you don't have a budget amendment to do that as a rule. Some of that is done by, by statute, and it's done by, by the, at the end of the year, when we do the wrap-up. But you can, this board can, management of this board can take a decision to do that if anyone wants. You're both right.
Well, I think it makes sense to do that where it is allowable and legal to do. A farmer's market, I imagine, is one of those. It doesn't make sense to me to take $5,800 out of the general fund balance to transfer it over to the farmer's market when they have a fund balance in their own fund.
Where, where it gets interesting is where it's restricted or non-restricted.
Yeah.
In your audit, you'll see restricted, non-restricted. Or for like instance, the police department, as I just talked about that a minute ago, they have four different funds they operate on. Drug forfeiture, police training, the vehicle fund, and the general fund. And that there has to go by several different.
Right.
And it's as far as how it can be spent, and money can be spent. You just can't take that money out and just spend it on the police department.
Yeah.
Spend on specific expenditures that's within renewable fund that is created.
Well, I'd recommend we use that strategy where it is applicable, to not pull money out of the general fund balance and to pull it out of the individual fund balance.
So specifically the farmer's market?
Well, for any fund where that's allowable and fits the, you know, filter that Steve is giving us.
You might want to, it's a good thing to look at, but you don't want to have conversations with your police chief with the law enforcement grants and all that stuff. And you even might want to talk to the fire chief, I don't know if we got anything for them right now currently or not, but I don't think you. But the, typically, this, they use these funds to take to buy equipment and buy things that they need to buy. That maybe we don't, it's up and above what the general fund's budget for.
In, in terms of the fire department, I think they have $200,000, I believe it's restricted. It's towards the use of a truck, to purchase a truck.
Yes.
So theirs is restricted.
Yes, so that's where I'm, that's where I'm going with this. You gotta, you have to play that game a little bit here, and you gotta remember.
Yeah.
I wish it was that easy to come in here and go to work every day, but it's not.
Yeah. Well, drug forfeiture, you're already budgeting for them to take 2,000 out of their own fund balance. And for police training, that one balances. And then for public safety, we have, what, 267,000 or something like that in?
75.
It's actually 78, but it was gone.
Well, you are, which is good. But you were already planning on that.
Yeah, so.
Actually, the audit, you gotta, we gotta check that number, because the audit actually talks about 295, and I think they got some restricted money in there as well.
I mean, it feels like nickel and diming, but eventually, these fund, fund balances will get larger while the general fund balance will get smaller. And I don't think that makes sense as a policy decision, since the general fund balance is more flexible and usable to us than individual fund balances are. But that's one board member's opinion.
But you're also talking about cycle committees too, who have fund balances.
Well, committees don't really oversee their own budgets, so that's something that we would.
Saying, when they determine, whatever committee I mean, that they determine what that fund balance is for. What I guess you're saying, I'm understanding that, so help me out here, is they can't do that?
No, committees don't have that power. We've sort of allowed folks like the senior center, who have specifically fundraised for an item, not to sort of pull the rug out from under them and say, well, we have the power to change what we do with that, which I think is the fair thing to do, but we haven't made those promises for other funds.
Fair to change it, is that what, I'm sorry, I said this something in there.
No, I said it is fair to allow them to use the fund balance for the reason with which they, not whatever they want, the reason with which they brought the money in.
If they were going to do it, that's understandable, because that'll happen also with your recreational department, won't it? I mean, you'll, you'll end up having, a lot of these will end up having dollars left over. So if you're assigning fund balances.
Parks and Recreation is part of the general fund.
Yeah, that's not a fund.
It's not a fund. It's, it's part of the general fund.
That's.
It's not a special.
It's not a special.
Every fund, it's a fund, it's a general fund.
Thank you. So I'm saying the dollars.
You say exactly where it's supposed to be.
So the dollars that are left over from that go back to the general fund, fund balance.
So I guess that's, that's what I'm questioning, I guess that's what I'm not, when you're talking about the township itself. I understand those fund balances, but when you start getting into committees that are accessible to fund balances, because I don't remember, oh, yeah, you, you get any problems backwards. For committees that have fund balances, if they're able to use them.
There is no committees with fund balances.
That's, okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
And the audit one that can change the fund balances can both take an expanded fund balance with management, and management and system, the 70% that's in this, this document right here, that vote on this board. And they're the ones who make the management decision to take and expand that. No one else, whether they're a director, whether they're a committee member, or anything else, can take and vote to take and spend fund balance. They can make a, they can make a suggestion, or they can take and request money to be spent out of it. But the board has.
What's with the vice videos?
The board has, this is as far as it goes. The board has to vote on the actual expense, because the board's name is on the financial statements. Does that pretty well close the door?
Good, thank you. That's what I needed. I appreciate that. All right, I'm done with that. We're going to public statements, or is there more?
I don't know, just we're good.
We're going to talk about next steps during the regular meeting.
Correct. I got mine in, Jen.
All right, we're going to go to four, if that's reasonable for everybody, the public statements. Do you have any public statements in regards to?
Yes. Would you all turn to page 36 in your handbooks, please? I have some questions that's vacillating between the planning commission, whichever one, and you all graciously have your own. And we're trying to handle the new CIP format that we're working on. And this is a perfect example, so it'll help you, immeasurable. Karen, initially, the, the CIP that was awarded was 49, 7, 10, correct? For 2022. In, in 2021, you have an activity there of $81,09 expenditure, what was that for? Can you tell me? Is that on that, so you don't know what that was?
I have to go back and look at a revenue and expenditure report to tell you what that is.
Well, the, the reason I ask is, is I didn't know whether that was for the nature trail or what, because the CIP wasn't until 2022, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that, that was, that just was confusing to me.
It could have been prior to the money being allocated to that.
And, and a question I have in general about this CIP, is it allocation, is it appropriation? Stephen, what do we say about what you, you counsel me once on what to call that? Is it an allocation of funds, is it appropriation, or is it just a categorization, or what?
Well, I was going to be correct about this, first thing, looking back, you would have to, you'd have to ask the supervisor permission that the board member can answer a question, except if we don't answer questions during public conferences.
Really? Wow, what the heck am I doing up here then? That's what it's for, is to get answers to your questions.
We all wonder.
Any questions regarding short timely answers may be posed to the board.
Exactly.
So that's, that's what I'm saying.
If the board's fine with asking that question, you can feel free to repeat it.
Oh, that's not what I was saying.
I thought that knew you were wanting to do so.
When, when we talked about where we put the funds for a CIP project, this particular project was, quote, phase one, Park Lake Nature Trail. And I said, I believe I used the term allocated, and you corrected me and said, "No, it's not allocated. That fund is blah, 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 blah." And so I wanted to say, is this money, this forty-nine, seven, ten, is that allocated for the, for the CIP project? Is it appropriated, or what's the spec, what's the specific term?
I thought you used the term appropriated.
Okay, well...
And, and actually, it was allocated.
Okay. Well, I knew it started with an A, just remember, we got into that.
I think, I think you have to, I think you have to allocate the money first before it's appropriated.
Okay, that was, you know, I...
Forgive me if I'm wrong, but that would be my thought. Allocate would mean you set the money aside, and my way of thinking is not always right. You would set the money aside and you would prefer yourself the possibility of a project.
Okay, and...
Um, and appropriating the money would be the final step, where they said, "Okay, we voted on this. Everything's fine, it's been passed, and so we're gonna appropriate the money, and you're gonna fulfill the line item to actually do the project."
Okay, thank you. That, that clears it up somewhat less, but... And, and Karen, the seventy-one hundred dollars was for the environmental study for the, um, one-six-oh-eight-six, uh, Park Lake Road property. How, how does it come out of a capital outlay project that is specifically for forty-nine, seven, ten? When it's not part of phase one, and it's not part of the capital?
This was voted on budget amendment to do that.
Oh, okay. That was, that was where it came from. I, I don't know how that works, so that was, that was why I asked. And, and then my follow-up question to that would be, if that was the case and it came out of that capital improvement project allocation, why wouldn't you put the seventy-one, ninety-one, twenty-five for, uh, twenty-twenty-three, to bring it back up to where it was agreed upon?
Because we were looking at that money for the trail. That, that use, the purpose of the property was for the trail.
Right, but the reason I ask that, that specific question, is because this, this specific forty-nine thousand, seven, ten was for phase one. And say, phase one, the, uh, the capital improvement project was, just, just say, to get the park not paved. And we had to go out and get, not me, but the appropriate, uh, persons that were put through this capital improvement project. Got a quote, like, like, Ben did, for asphalting, and it was forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And then we subsequently, you guys subsequently approved it. Then what happens when it comes time to pay that bill, when you only have forty-two thousand? What do you do then? You see what I'm saying? You're, you're short one. The, the reason we have a process for a capital improvement plan is to get concrete amounts of money to do a specific project. And if it's, say, a fifty thousand dollar project, they allocate fifty thousand dollars to the project, but when it comes time to pay for the project, hey, what the hell, it's seventy-two hundred dollars short. Where does that money come from?
So you heard tonight, I asked them several times to have a conversation regarding this money. They may choose to put forty-nine thousand dollars into this fund, or they may choose to leave it in the balance.
And, and I hope you understand, I'm just trying to understand it. I don't, I don't understand if it's, if it's short, but it seems like it can run back up to the...
This board can decide that.
And, um, last thing I want to say is I, I heard you say a statement when you went on this page that the board needs to talk about some subsequent, um, determinations, if you will, after, probably after the survey results. But I would strongly urge that there's gonna be a lot of people very interested in what the outcome of this is. And if there are some disappointing news to be given to the public, uh, you should have a public meeting, I think, to talk about that. That's just a suggestion. Thank you. You answered my questions.
Is there anybody else that has the public statements this time with regards to budget?
I'm moving, may I adjourn?
I, yes, you may move if you...
Give us five minutes.
I need that five minutes. I need that five minutes.
Do you want to just let them out? Can you, good? All right, good.
Mr. Rossman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Chambe, yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wissosser?
Yes.
Mr. Rendy?
Yes.
Mr. Fiancino?
Yes.